Let me um, let me see. If I go here for a second? Hold on. Hey everyone, I am live I guess right now. Tell me if you guys hear me. I know I streamed a little bit earlier, um, I just wanted to do it. A little bit early since I've, I am using a new application, I am using uh OBS Stream Labs so. That's what I am using to stream today, so I'm just testing out, so tell me guys how the stream looks uh make. I want to make sure uh before I like actually stream, everything is looking, you know, straight. And then I'll kind of get into like today's main topic and what I am actually uh working on. Everything should be fine like audio, um, you should be hearing background music as well as like the PlayStation 3's audio. And of course my voice, so far I think everything looks okay and thank you everyone for tuning in. Or for the people who are watching now. Alrighty, I'm gonna wait a little bit longer, probably like thirty more seconds and then I'm just gonna go ahead and start today's live stream and just get into the general uh consensus. But welcome everyone for joining, thank you guys. Today's stream, I'm not too sure how long it's going to actually be, um, due to uh I have a lot of stuff to do. Hey YSC, thanks for joining, I appreciate it. Hey Kyle, welcome. Alright, we got, excuse me, nine people in here, so I'm ready to go, alright, so. Today I'm like proud to announce that we have about six or sevens, or no, excuse me, um, I'll actually, let me. Go here for a second, I'll tell you exactly what spaces I am adding to patch 1.31. Um, so so far there's a lot of, I believe all of these are personal spaces, uh, so. We have the CCLIF Retreat Personal Space, I'm adding the Complex and Dream Space, uh, the Irish Pub from VMe, the Prairie Saloon Clubhouse from Lockwood. Tycoon Penthouse, which I believe that is from uh just PlayStation itself, and Virtual Tennis 4 Baseline Personal Space, so a lot of cool spaces, um, that I want to add. Oh, you got your D E C R, nice. That's what's up Killer Death. Um, but yeah, those are all of the spaces we're gonna be taking a look at for today. So those are the spaces I'm gonna be planning on adding to the live stream, I've done some work for these spaces and I've done like the metadata that I need to add and I'll be doing that live as well. Uh, but before we even get to the main part of this live stream, I do want to state a key disclaimer via with the RPCS 3 client. So um. I noticed uh people have been telling me that like PlayStation Home stopped working via with RPCS 3 since they, I guess, excuse me, guess I, they pushed out a new update. So I'm not too really sure what was the issue with that, however, in the link in description down below as well as the patch that I will release uh today. I will have like the official like RPCS 3 client that works uh with 1.86. Cause I guess, um, I guess it didn't boot up or whatever, or they have like just some general implications. Uh, but what I want to show you guys now is something that I've worked on about, um, I would say like two or three days ago. Cause I haven't really been messing with the offline client that much since I've been working on just regular YouTube stuff as well as the online stuff with my team and um. This is just what I wanted to show you guys that I've been working on in the background, so. Um, this is a Venture District, this is the S E E A version of it, it's a really nice space, I used to go here sometimes, not really a lot, but I do uh actually enjoy the space now. More than I did actually when I used to play home. But um, I also fixed some like thumbnails and uh. You know, actual screen links to the space with like original home posters that I thought that would be centralized around the space. I know right here, um, of course, the actual object is not right here, but the activity board where you could, you know, see like the daily activities would be here. Um, and I'll actually will pan out with the debug camera, it's just easier for me, um, I added some uh footage right here of like just the redesign of PlayStation Home since this um was actually featured after like 2011. Uh, yeah, basically Fall Online is still in a work in progress stage, but uh ever since Online Test 2, um, there has been progress made and that's all I could say has a right now. Uh, but I added some um, you know, other PlayStation Home stuff or like videos for both screens. So yeah, so at least the space looks a little bit better and I'm more alive, also added a poster via, yeah, right here. That's just showcasing some um like quote unquote new feature items, so I thought that was pretty cool to add um in this particular space, but um. For today, I am going to be uh working on the metadata side of things and we, I'm gonna be switching in between uh like two clients, so. The client you see here is like my personal main one and this is what I usually build off of to work. On like the actual patches, but I also have like dummy clients where I usually uh do all of my like work in since when I uh port my stuff over to like GitHub, it's just easier for me to work through. Um. But what I'm gonna do now is actually, um, go to my desktop really quickly. And um. Work on the SDC information, so in my case, we're gonna be doing Virtual Tennis Baseline 4 and I'm gonna right now just go ahead and um. Set up the SDC information, so I'm just gonna call this VT dot scene for Virtual Tennis. Let's see. And I'm just gonna paste this right here, I actually never been to the Virtual Tennis space at all on Home, I knew about it, I just never uh really cared about it to visit, but um. I'm pretty excited to at least get this one started and I need to go ahead and make the SDC for it, so, um. Right now I'm just looking through like a template that SDC so I could work on it. And this is the, the SDC what I'm talking about or what file allows me to basically type in metadata, so if I actually go on PlayStation Home where you see like the metadata with the icons and thumbnails where it says like the um, what is the space actually? That's what I'm uh getting set up now. So, gonna call this VT dot SDC. Right now I'm just typing Virtual Tennis Baseline 4, I actually have the list via right here. Sega was the creators or the maker of this and then. Let me see. This SDC was actually not that bad. And then, I already in the patch itself, I've already made all of the thumbnails, so it's pretty much easy or it's quite easy for me to uh get this set up. Yeah, I called this uh. Virtual Tennis dot MP4 and I need to actually uh put all the thumbnails into the client itself. So. Just want to make sure everything looks okay before pulling the trigger on this, alright, so the SDC is created for it, that wasn't too bad. Hey ZoX Mods, thanks for uh joining in. Right now, hold on, I gotta find actually where I'm working at. So thumbnails. And then I'm gonna go ahead and uh paste this into the client itself, so boom, all of my thumbnails for the spaces in here, so I don't have to keep going on back and forth. And then, let me just put this here, alright, okay. If you guys have any questions or anything like that, feel free to ask and uh I can ask while I uh be, while I work on uh this first apartment. Wait, holy snap, there's so many spaces, um. Let me do. I'm gonna do Andy's room as a test. Or at least the test scene. Alright, so, got that done. I don't know if the dash will cause the issue, so I'm gonna take that out, alright, so I know already have it labeled as Home. So it'll be a personal space, environment, um, okay. Virtual Tennis APT, I'm actually pretty excited to get this one set up first, um, cause honestly. Like I seen it in like, of course, photos and videos, but it's kind of different when you get to like experience some of these spaces for yourself. And this is why I really like uh, you know, doing this project as well, cause I get to experience uh spaces I didn't get to visit in Home for example, cause I know there were a ton, there was probably over like a thousand spaces. Towards out like a Homes period, uh, but now Virtual Tennis is now done, I'm gonna go ahead and reboot PlayStation Home from my PC. So, alright, Home is rebooting, so my screen will be going black for a second. Uh, this game is PlayStation Home and this was for the PlayStation 3, well, the Atom Republic Park with the mini cart mini game will be a possible entry? Uh, yeah, sure, uh PJ, if we happen to gain it in cache data and uh we have like the actual mini game to run itself, um, we can import that to the offline client. And what did Reu- ReuJin say and say, and welcome to the live stream, hey, how do I change my display name on PlayStation Home, I can't work out how to change it on PlayStation 3? Um, the way on how to do it via on the PlayStation 3, um, there is a method via on um. How to change. Your name, there's a um actual YouTube video you could check out right here. And I just sent you the link at PJ, so you could go ahead and take a look at that, um, it's very simple on how to do it, all you gotta do is basically um use like Hex Editor and just uh make sure what firmware I am on. I am on 4.84 Dex on my regular system. On my uh just my regular PlayStation 3. Hey Elemental EU, thanks for joining our live stream. I think all of my consoles that I, I am on is on 4.84, I know on my uh D E C R I'm on 4.84 LE firmware or D E C R LE firmware. Which is like kind of a variant, or it's like a special variant of it, um, but right now I'm just waiting for Home to boot back up, it usually takes a lot of time, uh, due to the fact that it's trying to load up 300 plus scenes and um, yeah. Cause usually the way how Home will work will just read, how you get PlayStation Home on it, um. I'm running a offline client and if you want to learn how more on basically how to set this up, if you're on Dex, you can uh check out this video right here. And um, this video that I'm showcasing right now is from me and it shows you how to set up the offline client. But uh you could see here that uh I am on an actual PlayStation 3, I'm not using a um, what you might call it, like RPCS 3 or whatever. Oh, I'm hearing myself talking in the background, hold on, cause I got the other video. Just waiting for it to do its thing, I'm gonna check logs to see if it's like actually loading, cause sometimes it uh loads, generic util. Now I'm hearing it uh in the background, so I just got to wait, um, but in the meantime, as the PlayStation 3 is booting up. I'm going to um work on more SDCs, so I don't want to waste like more time on actually doing this, so. We got virtual uh Virtual Tennis, excuse me, done, Tycoon Penthouse, I'm gonna do that one now, so let's see, Tycoon. Alright, so. So Virtual Tennis is here actually right now. Um, but actually I'll do Tycoon a little bit later in a second, I'm actually pretty excited, what's up Splice, thanks for joining into the live stream, um. Oh, the actual Prodigy Target Manager is like taking over my screen. I didn't even notice that, I don't know why I did that. Alright. So Virtual Tennis is this one right here, I just um. So here's the actual tennis space, pretty cool. Um, it has like a video screen error issue. I've never been here, so it looks pretty nice. Oh snap, it took me to Home Square, so okay, so it has like a redirect for the scene, I thought it was gonna actually. I'm gonna see uh. Really, it's already in cache, alright, that's good. Uh, hold on. If you could PM me that video Kyle, really quickly, um, send me that unless you already put it in the actual chat. I just want to see actually like outside the screen though, um. Looks pretty cool, we've got like this space vibe to it. I like this space actually, has like a funky noise to it. I'm, I haven't even checked the screen links to it, but I mean if I looked at the link, maybe. Alright, cool. So it's actually running at 720p, so right now I'm gonna fix the screen links thanks to Kyle really quickly, I'm just gonna set it to offline, uh, but I need to, let me see. Where is it, at Screen Content? Oh, so yeah, it literally says Source, um, alright. So it'll be uh Environment, if I could spell today. Actually, I'm just gonna. Do this really quick, alright, and I'm just gonna slap the video right here as the source and then I think it just downloaded, I believe, so. Alright. Alright, so, right here. Alrighty, so I'm gonna reload the space right now and um hopefully it will pop up on a screen. Display Screen Link XML itself is empty, but Global Screen Link does have a link, oh really? Yeah, so the video is not working. I actually never played Virtual Tennis, but uh I know it seems pretty fun, like I know they have it on Vita actually and welcome to H2O for uh tuning in. So we got like the original video and that done from the thing, so I'm pretty happy about that, um. Probably in his cache too, I don't know, I have to go through all of his data. But um, he probably has uh what you might call it, the actual mini game for this space and it may actually work, so. Not too sure, but that's something I would need to uh take a look in or a look at. Alright, um. Next space I want to look at is the um Tycoon Penthouse, so that's what I'm doing right now. Tycoon Penthouse, paste, alright. Gotta get the temporary SDC, cause I'm gonna just make a call to this one. Why even see if this Lua isn't encrypted yet, it's obfuscated, okay. I've already um made the. I don't even know where I have it at yet, right here. I did all like the research last night when I was uh dissecting this uh data from Sean when he donated his cash, so. That's why I'm kind of like flying by on how to do this. And that's what I usually do, I try to like prep for these live streams a little bit or anytime I like do data mining since it's just easier for me to just uh plug in this information. On, I need to uh go back and go to the. I need to go into thumbnails really quick, so Tycoon Penthouse and I believe I named it as the same PNG, so yeah, that's here. Wait, what? Oh, I accidentally deleted that. Alright, so the SDC information is already set up since I already had like a basic template of that, um, what I need to do now is go to Tycoon. There's something that's not mapping for Tycoon, but I need to basically uh fix that later on or hopefully it'll shoot out that error or like I guess. Bitch about it when I reload it in, but right now I also need to set up the. The configuration in the list, so. Tycoon Penthouse, I, I know a lot of people like the Tycoon Penthouse, I actually used to see it in PlayStation Home, but I also haven't, you know, really interacted with that space, so I'm kind of excited to uh. See what it actually looks like in real time, 2010 per, yeah, so this thing got like a couple of. And then I need to rename the scene, tell me how the live stream is looking guys, if it's not lagging and all of that fun stuff, cause I want to make sure, uh, since I'm. Testing uh OBS Stream Labs, this is probably gonna be my primary way of uh streaming, but right now I gotta wait for the long up or the long waiting boot up screen, so, yeah. Yeah, I think from what I looked at it from models and videos, I probably will look like it, yeah, there is a view visual in some scenes that they have three or four scenes and one that US. Uh, when I took a look at all of uh Sean's spaces, he had a lot of like duplicates of like SE Home Square Version 3. Hey Funky Cop, uh, thanks for looking into the uh live stream for today. His cache was pretty good though, cause we were listing like a lot of core uh spaces and stuff like that, so I'm happy, um, they're always, uh. Oh, the File tab, yeah, I could make it a little bit bigger. I just do that. To be honest, I could take off the Prodigy tab, cause uh it's really not useful, I don't need that, I could make uh my desktop a little bit bigger. So, and thank you all for watching and tuning in, but um. While that is doing its thing right now, I'm going to. Got, well, since we already did Virtual Tennis, that is already good, so I'm just gonna slap that in the patch file right here, so boom, it's already in User Direct. And then um. I'll work on the patch notes and um everything else, uh, but once actually this boots in. Or once Tycoon Apartment boots in, I'm gonna take some pictures, cause I'm trying to do this like as I go, like I want to take all the pictures now and um as I work through all of this stuff. Um, but actually Home booted it up, that booted up fast this time. I also figured out uh the other day, you could actually boot the offline client off like a, not like a USB drive, but you could run it off like an external ACD. Alright, Tycoon Penthouse, nice. And I'm gonna take some pictures within the client. Oh, really, thank you. I'm hoping since he had like Virtual Tennis, he has the Virtual Tennis uh tracksuit, because I remember the tracksuit, not that many people had it, uh, but people liked it. Alright, the sky actually works in here, um, it looks very futuristic. Holy hell, was I supposed to drop down through here? I don't know, I really like this space though, it's jiggy. I like this, um, I got like the freaking helicopter pad right here, that's pretty dope. I'm assuming there's like a Lua script that's missing, because I'm assuming there was like an elevator, uh, but I probably just fell through. Yeah, more than likely I feel like this would like push you up and down, um. Right now we can uh just go ahead and take a picture of, probably, that's what I'm thinking. Um, I could look at the logs right now to see what it's doing, but I'll just take some uh screenshots, so boom. Okay. I'm just going to take some screenshots, but um, let me look at the logs. Yeah, there's like two XMLs that got called that uh didn't really. Yeah, it says Main Lua Unexpected Symbol, so I guess there's like a Main Lua that didn't get loaded, um, it shot out that error command, so more than likely that is the issue. The space is really cool though, I really like this, I should have bought this at Home. This is pretty cool though, I really do uh like the architecture, it's very like, like Futurama or like Futurama futuristic. Alright, I'm gonna take like a couple of screenshots, maybe like two or three of the space itself. This is like some Iron Man type shit. Alright, that seems good enough and I'll take one like of the upstairs. Alright, and then I'm gonna go and run into Virtual Tennis and do that one really quickly. Do they have like the Virtual Tennis logo? I don't know, but I'll actually uh just like put this right here. Alright, so boom. Then I'll uh. The hell, there is a floating uh. There's a floating sofa, I'm not too sure why the offline client does that, but uh it's pretty interesting. I'll just take some random screenshots of this space and um. I like the, I like this apartment too, these are pretty unique ones. Alright, so we have basically all of the main ones we did just now, so yeah, um. Let me go ahead and. Oh, almost knocked my mic over. But yeah, this space is pretty cool, I I like this one, so home Tycoon is here and um. Alright, trying to see which one is the easiest one that will be to work with, uh oof. I actually wanna do the Sea Cliff one next, I guess, so. But there's gonna be missing textures, but I wanna get all of these textures mapped, so I need to uh. What you might call it, I need to put this in another client, so what I'm gonna do here is. Just go ahead and set up the metadata now for this space cuz I'm gonna have to use a another client to um boot this into, so. Before I even get started on booting the other client, let me go ahead and make sure on this. Let me disconnect. I don't even know if I have, hold on, alright, so that PlayStation three is connected, okay. Let me just save these images, save all. Um, I'm just gonna call this the. Test images, and this is just gonna be for all of the images we take today, um for today's livestream. Alright, so that's done, now I'm gonna work on the SDC. I tested out the Siren mini game and when I waited for the countdown to end, it booted me out of the game. Any clue? I forgot what patch I fixed that in, but I remembered. There was something that was causing that to do that, um, hold on. I don't know which patch I fixed the Siren mini game for, but I know uh. I I gotta check the GitHub cuz it's like, let me actually type in Siren. Nah, that wasn't that one, maybe it was a little bit earlier, cuz God knows, um. Yeah, it was um, what was this patch, version one point oh nine, yeah. Like it says, if the Siren mini game has any, it has the activity busy, please install the quick patch for this, so uh. What I'll do is you can uh look at patch one point oh nine, don't install everything, but uh there is like a separate folder that will fix that. But yeah, you can install one point oh nine, cuz I remember that issue. I like, I had to take a second to think cuz I was like, it's been quite a while since I I've been working on the offline client for God knows how long. I gotta get me another SDC, I don't know where the other one I had, so I'm just gonna use virtual tennis or virtual tennis and then just uh. Rename that to that, alright, so we got Sea Cliff or whatever. Game Mechanics made uh Sea Cliff and they came a little later onto home, so I think. I I don't even know what like quote unquote year they got introduced, but I know it was not like early home, Game Mechanics came in like, I don't know. Twenty eleven-ish, I would say, but I could be wrong, maybe a little like twenty twelve, twenty eleven. And uh I gotta set the thumbnails. I'm having, wait, I'm having a brain freeze right now. User directory cuz I know I put the thumbnails. Sea Cliff, just wanna make sure, yeah, I already had the PNG in here. Sea Cliff, Sea Cliff, alright, so save. Thumbnails is good, that's good, um, alright, so SDC information looks good for all of that. Now I'm going to uh go to here. Alright. Now I gotta use another cloud particle. Alright. This is like my little test area where I usually work at, Sea Cliff, um, hold on, I gotta make one, racing apartment. Aw damn, I actually uh messed up. Thank God I caught that now or would have had a major issue. What do you mean it's the source folder? Alright, so I have to recopy it over, but that's okay. Sea Cliff retreat. I'm just looking at the configuration and um. Racing APT. Alright, that should be done, but I have to boot, well, booting into this are the other client will be way much faster since it has like no items in it and anything. Like that, uh but that is done, I need to just re-transfer this stuff over now. Alright, so in the meantime. Let me um. Let me disconnect from this PlayStation three, turn this one on, and uh. Let me see. Been quite a while since I've been working on this. Alright. So my PlayStation three, do you think there's a way to get some maps, more maps? Uh, the other client has actually a part more in there, there is currently, I think about three hundred and four scenes that is in the actual build itself. So um, there's actually a lot. There's a couple, there's a ton of scenes we are missing though that I know, we're missing like really special events and a lot of like uh rare Japanese um. Are like spaces, like really old like Central Plaza beta spaces and all of that fun stuff. Alright, let me go get my water. Man, I wish home could load that fast and the main client, but it is what it is, alright, so we working with. Alright, I didn't add a thumbnail to this client cuz I already know I have it here, um but. You know what, I will actually work through all of the bugs that is shooting out now, so we can just. Plaster that a little bit later on, so. A- actually, I need a youth output log, so. And then hopefully um, this is the fastest way of doing it, so. D one, I don't even know which one is this, but I'll look it up. Alright, so that's cut, or I don't even know, cut, where does it wanna go, environments, racing apartment. Probably ADG particles or article issues, yeah, wait. I don't even need to make that folder, particles, textures, yeah, textures never map for whatever reason. Let me make sure I spelled textures right, okay, flame one dot DDS. Flame, oh, underscore, one dot DDS, alright, so that was the first error, then there's that error right there. Okay. That's flame two, so let me just go ahead and cut that. Particles, textures, flame two. And these are like all of the textures that will be in a scene, so this is like anything like particles, so things such as like clouds, fire, um. Like even lightning bugs uses uh like DDS files as textures. I'm trying to see what else, I know this is like the boring part of the stream, that's why I usually have music over it. Cuz um I'm just like testing out all of the, or I'm trying to debug. So we won't have run, or it won't run into any issues for you guys, and this is like the tedious part, and I used to have to do this for all three hundred scenes and uh. But yeah, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask cuz um that's what I'm here for. Particles, textures, flame three. And this patch more than likely will be out later on today. Cuz I'll probably just have it um all done, I just have to work on the um actual metadata for this, but that shouldn't take too long. Flame four dot DDS, the hell is this? I should have like a GitHub bot connected to my Twitter, so anytime I have like patches, it will just automatically um. Shoot out, and I think that's like GitHub bots on Discord, we could probably, or I can implement into the destination home server, so anytime. I put out a new update for offline, uh it will be done. Alright, so flame four. Racing apartment, um. Probably all of these files are gonna be here, I wonder if it's gonna be like flame four, flame five, or whatever. Just trying to do this as fast as possible, um so.
It's not too bad.
Yep, like I thought, it's gonna be flame five. Alright, I'm gonna try to work through this really quickly though. These are weird looking flames though, but they're actually probably like really detailed. I thought these were like clouds or something, next one is actually a smoking animation that is getting called that is uh messing up. Let's see, smoking animation missing at line one forty, okay. Thank God for logs uh because without these logs, it will be quite painful to. Remap all of this stuff, and thank you Gaz for making his tool, if you ever watch this, thank you, uh. Cuz doing this before was a tedious process. Textures. Alright, so let's just shout out some other stuff. I wonder, I know that's not all the textures that it just uh, yeah, there's some other stuff for sure. This is probably the ripple dot DDS, or one of them are at least, cuz I'm about to say. There's some other stuff, holy snap, this this space is missing like freaking like ten objects. I know all of them are probably encrypted too cuz this is way over uh like an older client, yeah, so this is the ripple DDS. Alright. Wait. Alright, so this goes here, actually, let me check back in log, I think I may have put like another one in the wrong place. Smoke anime, nope, that actually was a texture. Alright, so right off the back, the sky is messed up, so I gotta fix the sky too. Oof, but yeah, this is the space without its uh textures and stuff. Testing it now, works like a charm, thanks a lot, alright, cool, that's nice that it works, I'm glad it did, um, but. Here is the space. That's an audio. I actually never been into this space, but I'll show you like kind of the before and after effects when working onto this. What the hell, so this one actually opens the door, uh but you see how like some things like the fireplace is having like some texture issues via right here. Um, the mirror is actually works, which is nice. They got like some food in the kitchen, which is kinda gonna make me hungry. Um, let's check upstairs, I never had this space, I wasn't really big into personal spaces back on home, I know people that would like just spend. Tens of like PSN card or money on PSN cards to uh do whatever. I'm assuming there will be a light right here, but it's probably encrypted, all of the doors are working though, which is pretty cool. This will be a nice crib to own though in real life. I don't know if you can go out each one, um but I will definitely have to fix, yeah. I've seen of, yeah, I figured out what space this was by uh like looking online and uh just looking at the scene code and be like. Being like, what the hell is this, but uh this is pretty cool, um, but now what I'm going to do is. We almost had an hour, so we actually got like two or three spaces done. But what I'm gonna do now is. Hold on, environments, racing apartment, hold on, I'm getting kind of confused. Alright, so hopefully um when I apply this patch, there is one more texture that is missing, but I'm not too sure why it's not getting called. And um, yeah. Oh, really? That's what's up. Let me just knock out some of this other stuff. Alright, so let's go ahead and reload the space, and then I'm gonna go ahead and apply this to. Does the upstairs work? Um, we could, I know going upstairs does work. It's not even. So the texture is working now. Not too sure why that one texture is not being called. Here, what I'm gonna do since uh, I'm gonna do a couple of things right now. I'm gonna echo some commands and uh so I could just type from here, alright. I'm gonna set my run speed to like, I don't know, eight, so I can run a little bit faster. Yeah, upstairs works and stuff like going, uh but like the lights are probably encrypted due to Lua. Um, but I need to set, I gotta use like a pre-made sky that will actually work, so that's something I have to. There's another level, like upstairs upstairs? There's another level like upstairs upstairs Um Wait is it like on this floor I'm not too sure hold on unless I'm not looking at the space correctly I'll actually debug cam out though really quick You oh I see what you're saying uh it takes me up here let's see if we get it so I gotta how do I get to here though Hold on I gotta debug cam out again I hate that command when I I don't have like the thing on Wait what the hell does that downstairs basement Oh that's pretty cool I didn't even know that yeah this house is actually really nice though If I wouldn't like if I had money this would be like a really nice house to have Kinda confused how to get upstairs though You could probably use like some teleport command to get up there like if I probably do like I don't know teleport 10 10 10 I don't know where the hell I would land oh well I landed outside the map but uh if I do probably like I don't know Oh I spelled that wrong so bad Yeah 111 puts me like right here I'm actually outside the house But yeah that's the space but I need to um What's my favorite console Uh probably the PlayStation 3 or PlayStation 2 I'm a big fan of the Vita but um PlayStation 3 and PlayStation 2 are either my favorite consoles How you still playing that old ass game uh This game is fire though and I work on it um That was a button that brought them down that's probably encrypted via Lua then more than uh likely I usually like older games though I mean it's not that really like Major games that are new that I play like I never got into like the whole Fortnite craze and anything like that um Recently like the newest games that I probably played with like Yakuza Kawami I mean that's not too new but it's like recent um but I usually like classic and like retro like games in general Um I need to fix the damn sky that's something major I need to do Um what I gotta do is Trying to think what I should do I'm gonna go ahead and um port this to the The other client really quick and then I'll fix the sky in that one once I uh Figure out what to rename so that's what I'm doing now Yeah I'm into retro gaming a lot like uh I play a lot of like old classic like PlayStation 1 I guess you know PS2 isn't even considered classic now I grew up on the PlayStation 2 like some of my favorite titles is like Kingdom Hearts Uh I used to play a lot of racing games like Grand Three smoke 3 4 Midnight Club 3 double edition even speed underground 2 um I used to like a lot of basketball I still like basketball so I used to play a lot of the old uh classic NBA street volume 2 games and stuff like that Uh like when EA Sports was actually a good company in my opinion Where is the but um recently actually what I've been playing that's quote unquote a new game um It's just like the only Nintendo game I really play um I play like some other Nintendo games but I've been playing a lot of uh Animal Crossing on my Switch I do like I used to play Animal Crossing back on the GameCube and uh Animal Crossing is a fire game It's chill Um I'm trying to see I wonder if this is C data in here maybe that's that nope that's actually not that Okay Right now I'm going to Take this and drop this in here Now I'm gonna go ahead and switch over to that other client really quickly Disconnect connect Alright so we're going back on the main wait I reminded myself almost made a big mistake um I'm gonna go ahead and transfer to Before I even switch over let me uh Alright before we go switch over to the other client which will take forever to like scan everything I'm gonna go and um Drag and drop this so Load and run executable let me see if it's loading okay From the correct directory cool Can you put a video about pairing PlayStation 3 controller to Vita I can't do that Um if I'm like free and stuff I I've done a video via if you have a PS4 I did a video where you can uh take a PS4 controller and plug it into a PS3 um the PS3 one is like easy but um You can check this one if you got a PS4 controller but the PS3 one you need like an additional app so it may just be easier for like the end user to use a uh PS4 one Sent you the link of the stairs in Discord let me see 107 Ah that's it it's a Lua definitely that answered my question Uh but like for the PlayStation 3 controller with the Vita I know you need like another pairing app Via on your PC and it's kinda like dodgy but uh I'll try to look into making a video on that um If I can I'm not too sure when because I'm usually always like busy working on other stuff but I will keep that in mind Cause I actually been meaning to do a video on that I just I kinda probably glossed over it since I got caught up with other topics But I will be working on the Vita or Vita scene a little bit more soon again cause I've been trying to focus on PS4 You imagine you was walking around in PlayStation home and you saw somebody walking around I'd dead ass ask him be like how you get here cause you ain't supposed to be here That means somebody got a server working But um I would be actually like brazy Yo I don't understand how my client is running way much faster now like how I'm not even complaining but whatever Alright so the metadata of that scene actually popped up so that is good So I'm gonna go ahead and save Alright so I just wanted to take a picture of that before I go in hey VHS thanks for joining again we got 26 people Favorite PlayStation Vita game easy uh gra- Gravity Rush I love Cat Cat is like my video game girl crush I didn't like Chung Lee but um that's like a personal thing uh but Gravity Rush is a good game Persona 4 Golden on the Vita even though that's like a PS2 game is really good um Killzone Mercenary uh on the Vita was pretty good I actually played that and beat the campaign like uh like two weeks ago Like I randomly just like had that game downloaded I was like oh it's not too bad Yeah like that thing is like missing an object This apartment looks fly I'm trying to get like the helicopter in the picture Favorite movie um I'm into like a lot of like uh cartoony movies like I'm not I'm not sure like favorite movies I dead ass like uh Toy Story Even though like I like the original Toy Story Mulan I I like a lot of Disney films Um I like a lot of comedy films too like undercover brother and stuff like that um Oh Fast and the Furious Tokyo Drift even though that's maybe cringy but I like cars a lot so that's one of my favorite movies What are some of your guys' uh favorite spaces on PlayStation home I always usually ask that uh anytime I do these live streams so Seacliff is looking Did I do that let me see Yeah I did Hold on let's see what somebody's response is I tried the 4K Pro thing and every time I get PS3 it gets stuck on blue screen Is there a fix for that yeah just reinstall like whatever firmware you had up run up so like uh if you had like um I don't know like if you're on Hen or if you're like 4.8610 just reinstall that if you're on like Kex or Dex then just um Go ahead and reinstall your firmware because uh I heard like those uh Sometimes those mods may cause issues with like via with the XMB and like mess up like the actual XMLs and the dot RCO files and stuff like that And uh just reinstalling firmware will 99% of the time do that and the easiest um And the easiest way on how to reinstall your firmware um is via with safe mode and if you don't know how to boot into safe mode you can um Check out this video here and this is like the official video from PlayStation That's usually 99% This local is local Roco Island in the latest patch uh local Roco Island is in the 2.0 client already built in uh It's already built into the um actual core client that I made so like 2.0 had like over about like 200 plus scenes already um One thing I do need to do is to take out the SE original home square uh I was testing some other stuff that I forgot to do um but What I gotta do now is go to user directory go to paste So just wanna make sure I got all three spaces done so per tycoon yeah so tycoon stuff is in here Uh virtual tennis apartments in here and where is the other one racing apartment is Seacliff Dancing on the wall in the original home square calling people floor mugs was my fave What official firmware to connect PS3 controller to pairing PS Vita um is your Vita even modded though uh cause I know you need a modded Vita Um you could do it probably on 3.60 firmware via with like Hankaku Enzo that's what I would uh start with Cause uh that's what I usually use in terms of uh custom firmware via for the PS3 I mean excuse me Vita 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 Alright so C complex I'm gonna do the complex for men dreams that shouldn't have too much issues it's literally missing like two files Uh in terms of via DDSs so that's what I'm going to do now The complex let me just rename this toy dot scene let me go and This was another personal spaces got a lot of personal spaces alright so SDC I need to also check the thumbnails Seacliff whatever nope that's the wrong thumbnail I think I literally named it the complex the complex okay so I'm having like a brain freeze where I'm working at Tycoon complex okay And let me go to my SDC little information sheet since it uh has everything This was actually a free apartment back in the day Since we're here I'll just type this in Oh I took out that the actual like sign I need that there and dreams and then Tycoon penthouse uh it's literally called the complex Alright everything looks good in terms of metadata information Now I got two just cut that alright this is not too bad now Yeah whatever um I just got to put that here I know this is complex and I called it the complex Okay Alright Oh that's something I need to check to yeah it's in the home section I just wanted to make sure alright so The complex is basically done I just gotta test in the other client since I have like other settings like It will tell me the errors uh the client which I have I disable the error so it will load faster into spaces um Let me see I tried in 3.73 yeah I would downgrade if I have Hen and I do restore PS3 so would I have to do everything over again Um I would just reinstall 4.86 HFW and yeah more than likely you would need to re-enable Hen uh but um Let me go to debug settings really quick switch from this PlayStation 3 Um but for you your question with 3.73 you can watch this video on how to downgrade I mean it should work with 3.73 just as fine uh but if you wanna learn how to downgrade your Vita And which I recommend since you will have like quote unquote permanent custom firmware then you can watch this for me But yeah thank you guys for the uh you know 19 people who are watching or 18 now or I guess 17 well whoever's watching thank you Uh we are an hour into the stream and so far we got like a lot of spaces done Ah I just love how that just loads fast So let's go to Alright, the complex. So like what's gonna happen after you're done working on this? Well, this is just for like the offline client side of things, so uh when I'm basically quote-unquote done, finished working on this. Um I will upload it via to my GitHub and you'll see on my screen really quickly. And this is where I update my patches so for like the community to use. But after this uh I'm like I also like for me, I work on offline and also work with the online stuff. Uh offline is just basically just for something to people could have and this is just for like archive view and like preservation purposes. Uh but here's the space. Space is huge, actually. I don't recall this. Uh I don't recall me actually utilizing this space. I wonder if there's any like texture issues. It's not outputting any bad logs, so I guess it's fine. I'm assuming that textures are already in the client itself, so eat. Alright, shorty running too slow. Um I got to. What I need to do now is. Alright, she won't fly now. Bruh. That's pretty cool how they got like all this quote-unquote and a little cool like hacky stuff. Bruh, that's kinda funny. Um. Yo, why is this in the marina? Just like running. Like some botanical gardens. Um interesting space for sure. Um it looks fine to me. Uh I think there's only one thing I need to do with the scene and then uh I need to just switch it over. I remember when everyone was saying bye before uh everything. Um. Yeah, I was actually I was on like when the last day happened, I remember everyone saying basically goodbye and stuff uh back in twenty fifteen. I was uh. Think I was in like tenth grade when that shit happened. And uh I was low-key sad though cuz home was like one of my favorite games of like all time and that's why I'm working on this project. Uh PlayStation Home played like a vital role, believe it or not, in my life a lot. And um I am enjoying that I am working on this project, so cuz I think home was one of like probably one of like the best projects Sony ever made, but they really didn't uh utilize it to its full extent. But I think anybody who played PlayStation Home knew its um charm. Need to do this really quickly. Alright, I'm going to just keep this inside of uh here. I'll just put this here for a second. Cuz I'm going to switch out the Atmos. And that's only the sky I need to fix uh fix, excuse me, for this scene. And then I'll be straight. The complex. Wait. I already had those, so I'm assuming it use it. You utilize some like regular textures, environments. Yeah, it didn't even uh. Alright, so that's done. Uh alright, two things I need to do now. I need to. Let me go here. The complex. Alright, so complex is done. Now I gotta see if it's working in the main client. Then once that is verified, I will slap this into the patch itself. I'll actually will. Just slap it into. Nah, I won't do that yet. I'm gonna go disconnect. And I'm switching back from this PlayStation 3, so boom. Alright, so. While that my PlayStation 3 is rebooting, I am going to um work on the other spaces SDC, which was. The Irish pub, I guess we could do next. All of that, yeah, I got to do that. Irish. Let me go ahead and um. I thought this was the London pub and I knew somebody wanted that, but that was like an older scene. This came out like in one point seventy. Cut, environment, Irish pub apartment. I'll even set this up now in the other client, so we can um. Irish pub. Where? Wait, it's Irish pub APT and then I just say. So Irish pub, boom. And then I gotta fix all of the texture errors it has. Um gotta create the SDC information for it now. Let me um. I'm actually gonna do. I'm gonna call this saloon dot SDC. I'll come back to you a little later. Yeah, whatever. Alright, so the complex. Alright, the image did pop up. Oh, I did not wanna run a XAMP right now. That's not what I'm trying to do. So let me just take this in. Alright, so scene is running. Let me see. Yeah, I fixed the sky too as well, so everything looks good. Um. I'll just take some uh pictures really quickly, just so we can add them to the client itself. Let me save this. Ah, I don't know why this. Where did I get my PlayStation video? Or my my Vita? I have uh four Vitas. I have a orange Japanese Vita. I have also a white one. I also have two one thousand uh systems. Yeah, the space does look pretty cool for sure. I don't even recall me having this space, but it was for free, so I don't know what I did wrong back in the day. Um what console I played on the most? Um honestly, I probably played more on the PlayStation 2 and uh 3. Um. PS3, the games I used to play was home, of course. I played a lot of Gran Turismo 5, Street Fighter Cross Tekken. I used to play a lot with my like cousins and stuff. Um PlayStation 2, a lot of Kingdom Hearts. Uh Kingdom Hearts is one of my favorite games. I think it's that game is like a beautiful story. Um PlayStation 4, I really don't play that much. Like I have a PS4. I just, I don't know. And I have like a lot of PS4 games. I just, I don't know. The only game I used to play a lot on PS4 was GTA V and I used to just like drive around or do like a lot of death matches. That's what I was like really into uh on like playing on GTA. Oh, I don't even think I changed the SDC. But speaking of PS4, I will say one of my art, my favorite games that I do like to play on PS4 is like Kingdom Hearts III, Kingdom Hearts uh one point five plus two point five, um Yakuza. Oh, thanks for the donation. Actually, that worked. That's cool. I've been using Kexadex videos a lot. Oh, no problem. Central Plaza. You wanna see Central Plaza, my guy? We could go to Central Plaza as I work on this. Yeah, I'm gonna be making a lot more PlayStation 3 video. Like I have like a itinerary of videos I still need to get done. Um it's just. My I like I don't really have a lot of time and I do a lot of stuff outside of like home and like personal stuff. Uh but I do have a lot of stuff I wanna plan on still doing for the Vita. Um I've been trying to focus on the PlayStation 4 a lot since uh it recently got exploited. Uh but yeah. Which YouTube channel is your is watching while you rest, you're you're in rest? Um not too sure what you mean. Are you meaning like which YouTube channels I watch when I uh like take a break? Um if that's the case, or like what I like to watch? Um I watch like a lot of YouTubers though. I like to watch like Mudohar, uh Dash EXP. I watch a lot of hip hop stuff. I I love like, you know, rap music, so I'll watch a lot of like hip hop oriented uh you know. Like YouTube channels and stuff. I really need to fix Central Plaza's screen links. Central Plaza is lit though. Could we see the EU version of Hudson Gate? Uh yeah, we can. I could uh load it into the other client. I don't know actually if I have it. I don't even know cuz I have like a bunch of. You mean from Sean's cache? I can um. Give me a second. I can uh load that up in the background. Sean had like thirty-four spaces. Let me finish the SDC stuff and I'll try to map that as I go there. Oh, that is a lot of like information via for the description. And I definitely didn't need to uh change the thumbnails. Here, I'll just map this now on here. I don't think it will be too much different from any other regions um other than like screen links, but uh was there like uh what you might call it? Was that the place that had a big balcony? Not too sure. Uh there there was a lot of places that had balconies. So Hudson Gate is getting mapped right now. I need to figure out. Hold on. PS3 is or my PC is getting a little bit messy right now. Thumbnails, Perry Saloon. Alright, that looks all good now. Alright, but I don't even think I put the complex in here, but uh it looked good enough for it looked good for me, so I need to put that into the client itself. Yeah, whatever. Um Irish pub, didn't do. Alright, this is reading from like a whole different other. Oh, was it lag? I was like what the hell? That's what I'm wondering too. The chat should actually be like displaying on the screen. Not too sure why it's not doing that. You found some lotion fam? I'm wonder, it's weird. I wonder if I typed something random in the chat. It was supposed to be popping up on the livestream itself, uh but I'm not too sure why it's not working. Let me see if I can uh. I'm gonna actually try to enable chat box so I can like read it as the thing goes. Yeah, add source. Oh, holy hell. Yeah, now it's working. I was like, what the? There it go. Not too sure why. So the hub, yeah, the hub was cool. Right now, I'm just trying to add um I did the Irish pub, but we didn't do that one yet. I need to uh. I'm still trying to test out OBS Streamlabs. I prefer uh OBS Streamlabs, though I think it's a a better. A better program than regular OBS. Like I use regular OBS just to record my regular stuff, but I do like Streamlabs, how it's um actually you like our how much you can uh do within the program. So right now I am trying to figure out. Saloon. Ranch. I'm trying to knock two birds in one stone basically right now. I'm trying to get the Irish pub and that. Put into like the test client. And oh yeah, somebody said they wanna see Hudson Gate, so I could do that really quick. Um. Um, I'm not gonna map all of these things for the Hudson Gate. I'm just gonna call it Hudson... Gate Test. I'll, actually not, this will be a better one to do. So we can like knock a couple down. I'll just put it in home just to put it in there, but I know it's, this is, it doesn't matter. This is just like a sandbox for me. I mean offline is already a sandbox as it is, but, I don't wanna mix that into my main client. Alright, so Hudson Gate is all done. Saloon is done, Irish pub is done, and that, so that's okay. I know I'm missing something else. Here. I already know I did the SDC for that. I don't think I did the Irish pub SDC. I don't recall. Yeah, I didn't do that, so... I'm gonna do this SDC for uh, the Irish pub really quickly. And then, we're gonna be transferring all of this over to the other client really quickly, so... Irish pub SDC. I know I wrote it down or typed it down, I should say. Where is the Irish pub? Thought I wrote it down. Yeah, I was like, I'm not going crazy. Wait, I did, I left a like space. May have to change that, damn it. I left a little space in the other one, but that's okay. V me, here, I'll actually... Let me do that now before I forget. Cuz I wanna make sure everything is correct before I like transfer. Let me see what y'all guys are saying in the chat though. Can you do the dances? Yeah, there's like custom dances you can do, like there's a like preset made ones, um, stuff like that. There's also... I'm going to inventory, there's like custom Melimos. Oh, I added like the custom, uh, when a PlayStation 5 was coming out, I thought this was like be a good touch. Cuz this is probably something Sony would uh, done anyway, on, like, hold on. But what I was trying to say, cuz I'm getting uh, too carried away with this. Yeah, what I was trying to say once again cuz I'm reading, uh, but yeah, I thought Sony would do something like that, since like they always would like promote their systems and consoles in PlayStation home. I thought they would do something probably for the PlayStation 5 if it were to like come out via for, um, those two, or basically if they were come from like another space or whatever. Alright, so V me. Alright, Irish pub apartment. Alright, so that's done for that. I need to just put in the... I'll actually add an exclamation point, point, once I uh, put this in. See, it's not really hard to set up the client, it's just a lot of testing and um, making sure, it's good for you guys, cuz I don't like to leave things half-assed and I don't want to uh, come back to this unless I really have to, uh, via for fixes and stuff. So, Irish pub apartment SDC looks good. So, right now, I'm setting up... So, Irish pub is being done now. Hudson Gate, I'll go ahead and um, do what it do. So Hudson Gate is getting done, um, and... Wait, I don't think that one copied over. Everything looks fine. Okay, so, let's go and disconnect from this PlayStation 3, go to that one. Alright, so the PlayStation 3 should be doing, whatever. Yo, what's up Knife Gaming? At the hub, when I got a debug camera, I realized there was a whole street underneath. Yeah, you should, if you ever, um, whatchamacallit, if you ever uh, debug cam out, you may find some little things and stuff like in spaces, which is pretty cool, that's why I like the debug cam. Debug cam is a great functionality. Uh, but what you were saying, Mishu MBS, can I put a video about my room tour? Um, personally, I don't think I would have like a, I don't have like a really fancy room or anything. Uh, my room is like my room and I love it a lot. Uh, but I don't have no crazy like setup and no like GTX. I'm using like just some generic uh, OptiPlex Dell, I mean gets the job done. Um, but I may like, in the future, I may do like a video console tour. I don't really have anything like very special. I have like a, maybe like a dev, I have a dev kit and like uh, Vitas, and I, I could show off like my eight PlayStation 3s that I, like, some of them are broken though, but I do have, some cool stuff, but I don't think... I wouldn't need to invest, I do wanna invest like in the future, like a really good camera and I may be doing like uh, vlogs and stuff like that. And I may wanna like outsource to like another channel, maybe just do stuff strictly on like gaming and gaming reviews. Uh, but I'm not too sure yet. So, let's go to the Prairie Saloon. I wanna get those two textures done. Hub mode clubhouse. Alright, mapleleaf DDS. Club Clan Leaderboard dot CPP. Yeah, that's, that's generating stuff for online. Yeah, I guess this actually was a clubhouse. Map leaf. So let me uh, go here. This is definitely it. So what was it named? Maple Leaf. That reminds me of the racetrack on uh, Mario Kart. I think something was called like Maple Leaf or something like that. Apartments, ranch, ranch clubhouse, particles. Bet you didn't have a texture folder, as always. I don't have my like little small TV with me, cuz I usually have like a two monitor setup. I have like this, but I, I've been moving around uh, my room a lot and I've been working off a laptop and I've been trying to like flip-flop back and forth, uh, but I'm streaming on like my main setup right now. Mapleleaf DDS, dust cloud, FB4. Yeah, I'm not writing all that. So we're looking at, let's see, copy really quick. Cut. Apartments, ranch, ranch clubhouse, textures. Wait. I guess it wants to go here, can't complain with that. Alright, so what I'm gonna do now is slap this into the client folder really quick. Alright. Hopefully the sky works. If not, I'm gonna have to use the basic sky. Yeah, the hub is fire. But yeah, thank you guys for watching, thank you guys for tuning in. It really means a lot. Hopefully the scene is loading. I'm seeing a lot of stuff. Alright, so you see how it has texture issues now? This give me some Red Dead Redemption vibes. I wouldn't, I know somebody who I know personally would probably love this space. But sadly, I don't think uh, they're watching this stream right now. Our well partners. Alright, so me loading the space shit, uh, whatchamacallit, fix some stuff. I don't know why it's airing out. Unless I put it in the wrong space. Clubhouse particle textures? Uh, did I put it in the wrong place? Maybe. I don't know why it's yelling at me. Particles? Did I not spell that? No, particles, textures. I didn't put the dust cloud one in there, so is that the one that's having issues with me, or? Yeah, I think so, and I think I put that in the wrong place. I don't even know where I put it at. Oh, there it go. Alright, let's try this one more time. Um, but after this, I'll try out Hudson Gate and then uh, see what that does. Hopefully, um, this gets fixed though. Yeah, that was, that fixed, so... Hudson Gate test, I know there's gonna be a lot of texture issues. I'm just gonna ignore all the disable insertions. Here's the uh, EU version though, um. The reason why it looks crazy, uh, is because it's missing the C data. I haven't uh, made that one. I'm going to... debug cam out though. I ain't do any of the textures and stuff, so... But uh, here's the one that it looks like. It has uh, the icons via right here. I wish it wouldn't. For some reason it does, I don't know. Does it look different to you Kyle? But this, I guess, came from the EU region. I know they had like the big screens. That looked similar to me. Got like the... Oh really? It had a space? What, for that clubhouse one? Wait, I went to the run, wrong one. Alright, so... Wait, this is the wrong one. I'm gonna go ahead and set the local scene list to the other space. Wanna go to the Irish pub, I know that has some issues. I guess it didn't happen. Oh wait, it did have uh, two uh, error issues. Let's see. Irish pub. Wait, it shot out a couple of commands that it hated. I actually don't know though. Um, I'm gonna, oh. I'm gonna run the self again and relaunch the Irish pub. Ah, I see what you're saying. I'm just gonna cancel some of these screens out. Alright, so... Let's see what it does now. Sixty-four dust issue it has? Alright, so let me go to logs. I'm assuming all of the other textures is like random generic particles, I'm assuming. So, one five, yeah, so it's sixty-four dust. Let me see, textures. Was that the only one they had that was the issue? Not too sure. I get a sixty-four dust issue again. That was like literally the only issue it called, so... I guess all of like the other particles that air probably cuz I used it from other spaces. And I think if it's definitely in this test client, uh, it should be in the other one. And I think if it's definitely in this test client, uh it should be in the other one. So let's see what this one does, and then um. We're basically done for, I guess, the main core spaces. And then I can uh. Irish pub. I think I'll be actually done with uh this, so. Trying to think what I'm gonna do next. I don't know if there's actually like screaming issues or. Okay, so. What I'm gonna do now is um. Now go to C clef. Alright, I'm going to port this stuff over to the main client. Actually, you guys reminded me to. I need to um. There's two things I need to do, I need to uh transport. I need to transport the other data that we've worked on via for environments, so. What I'm gonna do now actually is just take some pictures while we're in this client. Or no, I could do it in the other one, I'm not too worried, but what I need to do now is uh focus on. SCE core action? Or no, it's a venture. I need to import the work I did for the Venture District into here, so. I know I did image, video, put that in there, and uh needed update the screen links, okay. So. Alright. I'm done with that. I don't know if I actually um. Let's see. Irish pub, did I? I actually put this in the wrong section. Copy. I just wanna make sure I have everything in the correct like area. Nope, that's the complex, getting like kinda confused now. Alright, so everything should be fine, I'm gonna go and switch out from both of those clients, and now we should be okay. So let's go back to the main one. Alright, now. Yeah, for real, like. That's funny, yeah, I guess. Yeah, I thought it was the um other space, I want the um. The sports walk space, or not sports walk, but they had like a sports um. Like a sports bar, I think it's literally what's called sports bar. Alright, so. I got all the STCs done. I just wanna see how big the patch is now. We're looking at five hundred one megabytes not compressed, so that's not too bad. I don't wanna like make these patches really big, but now I have to uh write up the. Patch notes too. Alright, I need to. I'm gonna go to GitHub really quick. So I need to get the spaces or via by names really quickly. Alright, so. And this is what I usually do, or make like a little template. Um, but now, the Irish pub is here, that is there. Alright, let me go ahead and uh create an image for this then. Just wanna make sure they run in the main client. Now. Okay. This is patch one point thirty-one. This is, last patch I did was on August thirty-first, so it's nine twelve, blah blah blah. Screen links, uh. We only did this here. Probably spelled that so wrong, yeah, tennis. Oh, what the hell am I, girl? I hate when I switch between clients and it does that, hold on, let me see something, mode avatar, cardigan. Alright, actually, I only wanna wear this outfit, let's see. I think I little. Oh whatever, I'll wear this, um. But that works. I'll just put some uh screenshots of the space in here as well. Okay, that's a screenshot, I'll pan out. Bruh, I think I like two twos in here. Alright, so that's for the pub, go to the prairie now. Okay, so. Also need to. Random damn chair flown in the air. Alright, so that's done, I could take like some pictures in the saloon as well. And I'll do like some outside. Home wasn't really a bad engine though, like for PlayStation three game, this doesn't look all too bad. Oh no, that's uh here. Twenty-three. Alright, so I think I got all of the images uh that should explain the patch, so that's pretty much good. Alright, so for screenshots, we're looking pretty much good for a lot of this. How do you save outfits? Um, easy. So the way how I do it, let's say, I don't know, I'll give you an example, let's say if I wanna save this outfit. Um, I'll just put on any shirt. Let's say if I want this to like be my outfit, right, this track jacket, or actually, let me select it first. So. You could like go to your outfits or whatever, right? And what you could do on your computer. Um, it's already should be in the client, like already like in two point O I included that. Like you can uh do it, but in the client, what you need to do is make a folder called avatars, and it will create like these little save files right here. Right now, what I'll do is like you could type in the CMD command bar, or like in CMD here, or like the command prompt. You could use this command called save avatar, and I'mma call it uh, I don't know, Nagato Track Jacket. Now it saved it, um if I wanna load an avatar, I can just look at the avatar name and it will switch, so I don't even know. One is called Nagato Japan, um. And it will just automatically change, and if I wanna load back into the avatar I just created, um. Let's see, I don't even know what I named it, Nagato Track Jacket, boom. Or actually, yeah, you wanna just load it, but I spelled it wrong, so hold on. To load an avatar, you just gotta spell the right name, so boom, Nagato Track Jacket. So yeah, that's how I switch. Um, but I'm gonna actually go to, I don't even know. I have like a couple of avatars though. Yeah. So I got all the, I'm just wanna make sure I'm doing this correct. Alright, so I think I got all of the stuff done via for the patch per se, or what I wanted to add. I'll probably do some more stuff, but what I'm gonna do now is uh re. I'm gonna re uh alphabetize this so it can be in alphabetical order, so. I like to use a website called Alphabetizer, and uh it will just alphabetize all of the screen links, so it's in like alphabetical order. Then I'm gonna delete this, put that there, and uh yeah. So. Holy snap, I didn't even change the build date. Um, what's today's date? Nine twelve? This, I did that on my birthday, version two point O, yeah, we're like on client version. And what's the date? One thirty-one AM, that's so weird how like the numbers were like, I don't know. I just had to change a few numbers in it, that's crazy. Um, so that's done for that. Oh, I need to um make a disclaimer too within the patch notes, uh. Important information, I'll probably put like a little freaking uh, what's that called? Caution emoji? What is that thing called? And I'll add this into GitHub, so important information, I wrote it down in the actual livestream. If there are way I can make custom firmware run on PlayStation three slims, uh sadly no. Hey, what's up Godgro, thanks for joining in, but uh if they're like an actual way, uh nah, it's only for Hen and HFW. Only like fat model PlayStation threes and science slims can get full customer firmware. I'm trying to look in the livestream. Let me, hold on, about to go on YouTube and see if I uh. I'm like watching myself, watch myself. I know I wrote it down and it's uh, or I typed it actually. Yeah, I just wanna say I won. Alright, so one thing I would like to state for RBC. Oh, I'm hearing myself talk twice because I have both of the things. Okay, one thing I would like to state for RBC. In this patch, I will leave the correct version of our PCS three. For users. Figure for any version, I'll just say uh. Alright. That's done. I could just say. Um, and then I could say there's something else. Alright. Now let me uh look into. Patch notes, this is like the end of the stuff. Yeah, Hen is not too bad though, I mean, I've, I use Hen still um to play online. Because I don't think you get clapped as easy as being on CFW. Like I, I've played a ton of games on Hen and I've been uh fine. Yo, I really like this shirt. I'm just looking at my avatar and bruh, it's drippy. I just wanna make sure I have. Alright, hold on, I'm about to make this easy for me. Just wanna make sure I have everything in the right place. Yeah, I didn't even have the Irish apartment in here, just wanna make sure I have literally everything into the correct patch. Because I'm working from here, home time koon. Virtual tennis, I know I probably did. What I need to do now as well, I need to uh. Gonna reload home actually, I'm gonna reload home and make sure everything is in alphabetical order before um. Packing this to you guys and sending it, uh because I'm working on the patch notes via right now. Alright, so. I got everything I need basically for right now, patch notes I still need to do. I just gotta get the names to the scenes basically. And my HTTP is like flickering, or my PlayStation three is flickering on and off due to HTTP, I should say. Alright, virtual tennis, Taiko penthouse, prairie, saloon, the Irish pub apartment. Okay. Let's see. The complex. And dreams apartment. And Sea Cliff uh. Alright. So that looks good for the most part. I'm just gonna go ahead and use Alphabetizer to um. Reorder this in like alphabetical order. What is this uh? What's my call it? Is there a way you could get free games on Hen? Uh yeah, there's, you could run like ISO files, folders and uh PKGs. I have like a couple of videos on how to basically run games via on Hen. Um. Alright. Yeah, so you could like check this out for me. Like I have like a whole full like a Hen playlist. Pretty sure you have to either pirate a game or back it up. Yeah. You could dump it via with like Multiman, like if you own like the actual physical disc or said title or like the PKG, you could like uh make raps of it. Alright, so let me, oh wait, wrong thing. Nice. Oh, you guys reminded me. Hold up, hold up, hold up. I think I made a boo-boo. I need to uh, you guys uh, hold on. That just dawned on me. Uh, I need to figure this out. There's a scene here that's not supposed to be in here. Yeah, it's uh this one. That was for me. I wasn't supposed to be testing this on this. Alright, yeah, before I even send that to you guys. Just wanna make sure everything is looking okay. Everything is like straight. Let's just reload the scenes. Open file location. Oh, wait. I'm doing, wait, I'm like getting ahead of myself, I think. Alright, so. Cuz I like to update the local scene list with the patch itself. Like I like to leave all like comments in here, so like I, anytime I update, you guys will see it. Alright, don't know why my character is ugh right now, but whatever. I like this song that's playing in the background. Sometimes I use like uh YouTube's like free monetization music, but sometimes it'd be jiggy. No cap. Alright. That was looking good. Alright, so that scene is loading. What's up, Lotus? Can you back up through BD using Multimania new ahead? Yeah, you could black up a Blu-ray drive disc via with Multiman. Same thing with like PlayStation 1 games, like uh. You could run PlayStation 1 games off of a external ACD and uh that's how I usually run my titles as well. Um. But yeah. Oh, that would avatar. Hopefully everyone is enjoying today's livestream. Uh, we did get a lot of work done. Thank you Kyle and thank you everyone for your references for today. Um, let me just rename the patch actually to 1.31. Cuz it's not a thirty. Um, I think everything is good for the most part. The patch should be okay. I'm just gonna go ahead and verify one or two more things really quickly. Alright, so home tycoon is here. Complex is here. Irish pub apartment is there. Racing apartment is there. SEA core stuff, that's one thing I needed to do actually, you guys. SEA Adventure District. Fixed screen links of original content via from cache data. Okay. The EU screen links? Uh, not yet. Wait, what the hell? Um. Hold on. It's like, hold on, I gotta toggle out through stuff. EU gate, let's see. Is the EU ones different than the US versions? Holy hell. That is a lot. You already mapped them all, Kyle? Seems like you already did. Um, what I can do uh is whip up. Hey, what's up? PS5 with a disk drive. What do you think about the Xbox Series X or PS5 Digital? Um, honestly? Honestly, uh with the PlayStation 5, uh I'm probably not gonna get one straight up cuz I always like to wait for like when the consoles drop. Uh, but I really, I'm probably gonna get the PlayStation 5 regardless. Um, but I wouldn't really go with the digital model. Uh, due to a lot of reasons and I could give you guys a fact. Imagine if you guys are like playing on the PlayStation 5. And you know, you wanna sell your console for whatever reason. Um, those games you really can't even sell if you buy it digitally since it's tied into your account. Let's say if a game gets delisted or you know, you don't have any internet, you may have to like go through certain verifications. And that's why I always like to have the physical copy and disc cuz A, you could always resell your game if you want to. Um. The Xbox Series X or S at $299 is a really great deal, I would say. Um, it even caught my eye. I mean, at $299. Especially in the pandemic and stuff like that, um, that is gonna be a high seller. I don't know how PlayStation will combat that. Um, cuz you know. $299 is like at the Switch prices, but even like you go, you do a quick search on uh the Switch, um, it will, whatchamacallit. Uh, the Switches and like everything is like really boosted up in price due to like uh the Rona, but. But uh Kyle, quick question. Um, with these EU screen links. I guess maybe a little bit later on, I can release a patch via for uh, whatchamacallit. Hudson Gate. Uh, if you're in a debug cam, I don't know how to hit R3 in RPCS3, but whatever R or debug cam. You could do that, or you could just literally um type in debug cam in like uh the command list, so if you were like. Had a command list open like this, you type in a star debug cam, uh it debugs out, but if you're on a PlayStation 3, you could do that. I'm just, bruh, you ain't tell me I need a PS2 controller to use safe mode. I did, I'm assuming you had a PlayStation 3 controller, but yeah, you need a PS3 controller for safe mode. Uh, you could use like this cheap ass, uh I use like a cheap Voi, like Amazon bootleg controller. Alright, so that's done. Alright, so I think the patch is done pretty much. I'm pretty happy where we're looking at. I'm gonna go ahead and roar it up. Um. For Hudson Gate, what I'll do is uh later on Kyle, if you're listening. I'll probably may have like a quick release or plug it into another one because I'm gonna have to like sit down and uh try to remap everything. And I already got like all of this done, so, but it shouldn't take a long, it does seem times that the images can go in order and certain caches, really? Uh eBay would be good too, probably. But let's see how big the patch is. I'm gonna go ahead and roar it up though. So I'll guess I'll upload this to Git right now though. Is this game on a PlayStation 4? Nah, this is for the PlayStation 3. This game came out in 2008 and I'm running a offline development uh client. So. That's how I'm basically playing this now. Alright. Wait. So I'm doing this live and for you guys, uh so you could see how I usually do the process. I usually just slap whatever I have in uh the patch notes and uh work from here and then uh yeah. And then I'll just upload it to Git. Oh snap, that's way too many. Oh, I probably, I spelled all that wrong in the patch notes, but whatever. I am not uh too mad about that. Forgot how to bold. Just like Git write-ups, I can make stuff bold. Or that like italicize it. I believe if it's like two networks would get like Evan bold. I forgot how to bold things. Yeah, that's how you do it. Why did that bold though? See, that's why I don't. The hell? I'm trying to see. Um. Alright, so everything's good, it seems. How big is this patch? 338 uh megabytes compressed. So it shouldn't be too bad, but uh yeah, the patch will be um up. And. Can you play online games for what? Uh, well, for online is being worked on for home. This is just like a offline client for like via the community though. So yeah, guys, I'm basically done with this livestream. Uh, thank you guys for tuning in. I know sometimes I do these at a short notice, but I. Pretty much had a fun time going through this. Um, sweet, I'm glad to see home being back to life. Is this being run on a physical PlayStation 3 or RPCS3? Um, I'm using a real actual PlayStation 3, but you can run this on RPCS3. Uh, no, if you look in the link in the description down below as well as in today's patch, um, if you're gonna be using the RPCS3 client. Make sure to use the one that's linked in the description down below since RPCS3 kicked off a new update. Which uh blocked PlayStation homes uh ability to run for whatever reason. How much PS3 controller is it now? Um, I don't even know with the Rona. I'll show you the one I got though. I got this fake ass uh PS3 controller. This is the one I'm using literally right now. It's called the Voi. It's like $12 and uh it works. So yeah, if you wanna check that out Playboy, here you can uh, whatchamacallit. Laters, thanks for tuning in. Yeah, I'm assuming if you're from the US, you could see this, but this is the exact PlayStation 3 controller I have. Let me see if the GitHub actually released. I'm just gonna wait for the GitHub to release and I'll, yeah, you could probably pick one up at GameStop, but I don't know if you really wanna go outside and you know, cuz. Depending where you live, you know, being outside ain't really a good thing as of right now. But yeah, thank you guys for, you know, whoever donated, thank you for that, whoever, you know, stay tuned. Um, this. All of my livestreams as always, guys, if um will be in the link down in the description down below. Uh, to see the playlist and anybody who's new watching this, feel free to join the Discord and all that stuff. Yeah, for me, uh it's a team effort. I'm not like the only person who does this. I'm the only person that really like takes heed with like offline client, but uh my other team members. Does like amazing work and stuff, like I have a team behind me. I'm just like the one that like shows it off basically. Cuz I've been like working on it for so long, but um next livestream, not too short, more data we get and more builds and like more spaces. I'll always be glad to livestream for you guys, um and kick it off. Probably I'll, next livestream, if we get newer spaces, I'll try to add that in, or if not, I'll try to fix old spaces. And see what I can do for next patches, cuz there's so many patches I've done, uh it's crazy. But. Yeah, see y'all guys. Thank you guys for watching and thank you guys for staying in tune. The patch will be out later today, but as always, love you guys, peace.